...sixteen twenty eighteen special meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajianian. Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Here.
May I have your report?
The agenda for the January sixteen twenty eighteen special public meeting of the city council is posted on Friday, January twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, and what's next on the agenda?
One would be Director of Community Development regarding selection of conceptual design and authorization of a request for proposals seeking design and technical services for the proposal enhancement to the Arts and Entertainment District. One A motion selecting a conceptual design. One B resolution authorizing preparation and issuance of RFP for design and technical team for Maryland Avenue and surrounding alleys in the Arts and Entertainment District.
Okay. Ms. Beers?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we're going to have Jen McLean come up to go through a presentation for you as she's getting prepared for that. As you all know, in two thousand and sixteen, in August, the city basically closed down approximately twenty-five hundred square feet of the Maryland Avenue Paseo, just to make sure that we had an understanding of what that paseo would feel like for pedestrians. And I think we were able to garner some great insights as it relates to that entire area, including the alleyway, and possibly be able to bring forward a vision. Initially, that was put forward by Councilmember Sinayan, as well as the entire city council, and bring to you some schematics that may work for us. So with that, I'll have Jen go through some of those ideas.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Beers. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Happy New Years. It is with great pleasure I bring this item before you today. I think that we, so many in the room today are really passionate about Maryland and this project. As we've contemplated the future of this project, know that it has evolved significantly over the past eighteen months. It's my hope today that the presentation will demonstrate a thoughtful approach to design and placemaking in the city's only Arts and Entertainment District. The sketches that you're looking at today were done in-house, and I'd like to introduce Christina Gardi, urban designer, whose sketches are really, have helped bring this to light. So with that, just some background on the Arts and Entertainment District. I know that initially, we were really looking at just Maryland Avenue, but as we started to really look at this holistically, we realized that there's a great opportunity for the Arts and Entertainment District. So before we get to the big idea, Maryland between Harvard and Wilson is considered the Arts and Entertainment District. This was called out in the downtown specific plan. It's anchored by the Alex Theater to the north and the Downtown Central Library to the south. Oops, I think we've... There we go. There have been some significant number of changes over the past decade in, obviously, downtown Glendale, but within the Arts and Entertainment District as a whole. So some of these have been negative market conditions. One of them was the loss of redevelopment. That limited some of our ability to offer up facade improvement programs. Another was our ability to move forward on some of the retail units that the city, the former redevelopment agency owned at one seventeen and one thirty-one North Maryland. Some of the positive developments in the district, as you can see in this map and as you know, just walking in the downtown, we have a number of new cultural institutions now. Obviously, the Arts, or, excuse me, the Alex Theater, but we now have the Antias Theater Company, the recently renovated Downtown Central Library, which now includes the Reflect Space, the Museum of Neon Art. Soon, we'll have the Museum of Selfies, which is scheduled to come onboard on March. And you can start to see that there are, there is truly arts in this Arts and Entertainment District. This is in addition to the number of new businesses, new restaurants that have been added, such as Jen Korean Barbecue. We have the Lemley Theater and Lofts that will be coming online, and a number of other new restaurants in the area. As we look at Maryland, there are some issues that we've still needed to overcome. And one of them I mentioned was the one seventeen and one thirty-one North Maryland units. So in an effort to build on positive momentum and try to attract more retailers in, on Maryland, the city council requested the development of the pilot program, which we kicked off on August twenty-ninth of two thousand and sixteen. And this is really a twenty-five hundred square foot space that is between Wilson and Broadway. We looked at a number of different scenarios and where to place this plaza, but it was important that we maintain access to the parking at the exchange parking structure. As you can see here, we were able to maintain the access to the parking garages, but the, there had to be U-turns if, in the event that the driver was not going into the parking structure. Some of the, the elements that we included within the paseo program included, we experimented with different entertainment. We had, we had different musicians come out. We also just, we had the Downtown Glendale Association, and they provided tables and chairs for the area. And what we saw is that even without programming, folks naturally went to the area. We were surprised that, given the disruption to the grid of the traffic, overall, there was very positive response to the paseo project. We did a survey in September of two thousand and sixteen, and we found that about seventy percent of respondents said that they wanted the Maryland Paseo as a permanent feature, and that seventy-one percent liked the Maryland Paseo for outdoor seating. We had about eighty percent who said that, yes, they'd love to have programming, but they would prefer to have that in the evening. So overall, residents and businesses responded very favorably to the paseo pilot program. We did, however, receive some complaints. We had about ten calls and emails, and these were received citing concerns regarding access to parking, unsafe U-turns, and additional traffic. We also observed other indicators, such as complaints on parking, public safety responses, and retail sales. Surprisingly, we saw an uptick in retail sales during this time. There were no calls for service, and we did receive about sixty complaints on parking. And this was in response to the number of spaces that we reserved just for a neighboring restaurant's valet, as we were trying to reduce any hardship during this time. When we take a look at some of the other possible attractions, what we find is that the creation of Maryland Paseo is an example of some of the tactical urbanism that we see in cities like New York, Denver, and Los Angeles. This is a, an effort to show projects that are low-cost, temporary changes to the urban environment, usually in cities, intended to improve local neighborhoods and provide additional gathering spaces. As we look at the opportunities in downtown Glendale, you know that there are very few opportunities to just, to sit down and enjoy the, the urban environment. And this provided an, an additional opportunity for that. While responses to pedestrian malls across the nation have been mixed in the past, there does appear to be this renewed interest in creating city gathering places in the urban environment just by focusing on placemaking. And when you think about the different travels that you've experienced, you know when you go to a certain city, or a certain town, or a certain street, what appeals to you, whether it's the, the way that the, the onings or the mood lighting is created. In this, you have some attractions focused on kind of unique, one-of-a-kind retail or green space. Where is it casual for you to stroll? Some of the other elements that you may appreciate are the street elements, landscaping, banners, even bollards can be unique and pretty and add to the overall placemaking. And public art, of course, is a major component of this. Street trees. If you look at Maryland, you have these beautiful, very large palm trees. Those are defining quality of, of Maryland. And that's something that you see throughout, throughout the world, right? The street trees create identity, shade, and character. And then shading devices. So this is another one. We see different canopies, umbrellas. Each of these create yet another characteristic that make the street that much more inviting, and it's functional as well. So as we take a look at all of these, and we look at, again, the Maryland Paseo, we are, we also know that there were some, there are some constraints and some hurdles that we had on this street. If you were to go onto Maryland, you could see that there would be the cars making these U-turns, and it was somewhat disruptive. It was disruptive to traffic. It was at least concerning to some of the pedestrians, and some of those folks sitting down on those tables might be a little concerned that there is a car making a U-turn there. We also noted that there were a number of folks that came forward and wanted to host special events. We did host some special events, some filming as well on Maryland, but we had to turn some away because we were not able to accommodate their requests. As an example, there was, some folks wanted to do like a farmer's market or a food truck festival. Because we had these large planters that were difficult to remove in an expeditious manner, we had to turn those folks away. And we ultimately deemed it would be too expensive to temporarily install bollards, at least for a pilot program. So when we also looked at emergency access and some of the ingress and egress of loading trucks, we realized that this may not achieve really what it is that we're after. And what, what is it that we're after? Well, we want a street that's vibrant. We want to see people that are out walking the street, that are having outdoor dining experiences. We want there, we want vibrant retail activity. Is there a way that we can achieve that without necessarily closing off the street? So those were some of the things that, that we considered as we were going through this, this project. Some of the other existing characteristics of Maryland, you can see very clearly, it's designed for the car. You have these very wide auto ingress and egress access points. The parking, public parking sign, if you look just to the left, it really dwarfs some of those retail storefronts. You can also see that there is somewhat insufficient pedestrian space. Perhaps there's a way that we can extend out these sidewalks. Even some of the, the trees, which we've identified as an important characteristic to streets like these, appear to be a bit spindly or missing some, some trees. But we do have really great palm trees out there. And if you look, if you were at the Downtown Central Library looking north, you could clearly see that these palm trees are a very defining factor. So again, as we, as we contemplated the success and future of Maryland Paseo, it was recognized that investing in the paseo alone may not be enough to spur real economic change, or even pedestrian interest into Maryland. Again, if you were to watch some of the behavior, we would watch as, as folks would leave the parking structure, and they would try to get to Brand as soon as they can. There's really nothing that's anchoring Maryland and keeping the folks there. So what can we do to help revive that area? What the pilot program did demonstrate, however, was that the street closure was possible, and that people liked it. The businesses responded very well to it as well. Further, even the chairs and tables, those encouraged outdoor dining, and the paseo created an additional public space for special events. However, it also demonstrated that there are some concerns regarding the functionality of the current design, as I've discussed with some of the U-turns, and even some of the bollards and the lack of special events that we've been able to host. So as the city revisits really the purpose behind the Arts and Entertainment District and the push to make Glendale an eighteen-hour city, it was realized that the city may miss, be missing an opportunity by focusing solely on this small area, and perhaps we should look at the Arts and Entertainment District as a whole. So with that, what, with the help, again, of Christina Gardi, really who led this charge, we took a look at the extended sidewalks, and not just at the portion from, from Broadway to Wilson, but extending it all the way to Harvard. So the next few schemes here are intended to show you what this could look like. On these, this is the scheme two. So the first scheme is the, the Maryland Paseo program as it stands right now. This scheme is contemplating extending the sidewalks on the west side of the street. So you're still allowing for, for cars and the grid to move forward, and you can still enter that parking garage, which has about six hundred and seventy-five spaces, and that garage is always full. So it's very important that we maintain the flow there. With this, you're also able to capitalize on some of the commercial activity on the west side, of which there's still, there's a number of businesses on this, including the, the units that the former redevelopment agency owns. This is extending it all the way to Harvard. And as you take a look at the Civic Center as well, this is leading right into the Downtown Central Library and any other exciting changes that we have coming forward for the Central Park Block. This also calls for, if you see that little red marker, the A and E district marker, that's gateway signage. Right now, if you were to walk in the Arts and Entertainment District, you would never know it. There's really no signage that clearly identifies it, and that could be yet another opportunity. The other scheme here does the same thing, but on the east side of the street. So this is calling for the extension of the sidewalks on the east side. The, the advantage to this is it does make it for an easier right-hand turn into the parking structure if you're traveling from the north. The disadvantage is that it appears that most of the retail activity is actually on the west side of the street, so you may not be encouraging that outdoor dining like we are intending. And again, this is just continuing it through Harvard. The scheme four, this contemplates extending the sidewalks on both sides of the street. It would call for the removal of the palm trees. However, you would be able to, to pick up equal square footage generally on the sidewalks, so you're at least being very democratic in your approach here. But there may be some, some issues on traveling, excuse me, I'll get there, traveling southbound to the street, and it may be more costly as you're removing, you're removing those palm trees in addition to now doubling the, the sidewalks. And this is calling for it all the way to Harvard. So these are just a few examples of what the promenade could look like, and I know that our council members had some examples as well. If you don't mind, I'll pull those up. Again, I know that this is a very well-traveled group, so I'm sure that in your travels, that you could pull different experiences from cities that you've been to that, that, that you can identify would work very well with Maryland. Mr. Najarian, I believe that these are some of yours.
That's Malaga. That's their shopping area in Malaga. And aside from the, the covering, the rather simple shade structures, they've really put a lot of detail into the streetscape with polished, I don't want to say marble, but polished stone. You can see the lamp standards with the flowers, and it really looks almost as it's an, as if it's an indoor space rather than an outdoor. And they're, but obviously, in this street cross-section, there's no vehicles. It's pedestrian.
And then I think we have another example, the umbrellas.
That's, that's at night, so they have a light component where they, I think during Christmas, they, they do that. And that's another example.
That's Agüe de Portugal, and apparently, they've used umbrellas, colorful umbrellas to cover their narrow streets, really changing the mood and the, and truly the nature of the experience walking through those streets. Just simple touches. I, I can't imagine having these umbrellas up can be very expensive, for example, but the effect is enormous.
So the elements of color are something that seem to possibly change the whole environment. And if I can trouble you to go back to the slide show. So one of the things that we also took a look at then was, were the alleyways. There are some key alleyways in the Arts and Entertainment District that could lend themselves to some very colorful, interesting, unique experiences that you don't currently get on brand. So what we've done is, is take a look at these different alleyways. And before I move forward, this is a street section of Maryland Avenue. And you can see that now with this proposal, you would get about thirty-five feet in sidewalk. So this is the alley. There are three alleys right now in the Arts and Entertainment District, at least that we're considering here. The one is between Harvard, excuse me, between Brand and Maryland, and then the others are arteries that link the two. The ones with the green arrows, those represent private alleyways, so the public can access, but if we were to do any changes, we'd have to work with the property owner to do enhancements there. The alley that is horizontal, that is something that the, the city owns. So these are some of the private domain characters right now. If you've walked through these alleyways, you know that they're cluttered, that there are a number of different clear passageways that would need to be encouraged, and we can make recommendations such as additional lighting or public seating. And again, we'd have to work with the property owner on that. The other is...
Jennifer?
Yes.
And the north-south alleyway goes from Wilson to Broadway, correct?
The north-south?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
I just want to clarify that, and that's the, the area adjacent to the parking lot that the city owns.
Correct. That's right. So, and this, that is the one here, the, and we'll discuss the public domain character. So as you can see right now, you just have these, it's a blank canvas. You have a public parking structure, you have some very utilitarian landscape designs there, you have some of the window onings that are, are pretty basic. With a little creativity and art, you and color, right, perhaps colorful umbrellas, canopies, you can end up with some very interesting elements here. So just taking a look at some inspiration from San Diego or Canada, you see murals and neon. You can pick whatever superhero you'd like up there, whether it's Spider-Man, but having some sort of 3D art, market lighting, landscaping, murals, again, some, some color, pops of color, looking at the window boxes, banners, market lighting, some of the bamboo walls, we can definitely work with our public art master plan as, as they look at focusing their efforts on the Arts and Entertainment District. These are just some other ideas that, that we've pulled, whether it's the different onings, different marketing, or, excuse me, programming. The farmer's market could be a possibility in that, or perhaps it's an arts market. We could work with some of the existing tenants there to create more night spots, working with color, bold color. This is speaking to some of the mood lighting. The picture on the top right, the entertainment, that sure looks a lot like Maryland. I mean, you can, you can see, you can envision having a DJ there with a little bit of lighting, and you'd still have a very functional alleyway in the morning, and then you could just transform it, transform it in the evening. Again, 3D art, murals is another possibility, and working with some of the storefronts. We mentioned that we had the facade improvement program at one point. That went away when redevelopment went away, but recently, when the city council created the Business Expansion Grant Program, that could be another tool that we utilize for this. And again, more, more ideas, canopy and seating. So with that, as we look at our opportunity for the Arts and Entertainment District, we start to see that there is immense opportunity. When we look at the alleyways, the opportunities on Maryland, and what we would recommend is having the council select a conceptual design or designs. We could flesh it out in an RFP, and hopefully, having a motion to authorize the preparation and issuance of a request for proposals for a design and technical team. I understand that the city council will hear from the Public Arts Master Plan as well in two weeks, and one of their top priorities will actually be focusing efforts in the Arts and Entertainment District. So working in tandem with them will be paramount in this as well. So with that, I would like to thank you. I'm a bit jet-lagged myself, so I'm sorry if that was the longest presentation you've heard from me.
Oh, you have a question?
No, no. If you have a speaker, take this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to public first, and Rick Lemo.
Mayor, would that be three minutes? Good afternoon, council, mayor, city staff. Did you say I have thirty-three minutes?
Forty-three minutes.
Whoa.
I know you have the time.
You're all going to feel like you have jet lag. My name is Rick Lemo, and I'm here representing the Downtown Glendale Association Community Benefit District as their president. We absolutely support the idea of focusing our infrastructure and artistic improvements related to placemaking in the Arts and Entertainment District. We basically look at that district from Harvard to Wilson. That doesn't mean that you couldn't extend it all the way in the future, further. This would include some attention on the alleyways as well, which are tough to do because the property owners are responsible for those. The idea is consistent with efforts that we have been focused on since we formed the district little more than four years ago. The Maryland Pilot Program is the right step to creating a pedestrian-friendly atmosphere conducive to both citizen and business needs. The Downtown Glendale Association has been a supporter of the effort by providing tables and chairs throughout our city, as you have seen, increased ambassador support, and this area could also be used as a great alternative for future events, such as special events for residents and business, and a place to maybe view video if you don't want to fight the crowds at the Americana for the tree lighting. Put up a big screen there, and more people could just feel comfortable and also enjoy the restaurants and all just sitting there watching it on TV. I would also suggest creating a one-way street on Maryland from Harvard to Wilson with the caveat that there needs to be significant attention spent on the safety measures. This would enhance the pedestrian experience and create an atmosphere that is more welcoming to citizens and visitors to our city. Frankly, one-way streets in other areas are not as good of an idea because it can actually make traversing our city a little bit more difficult and could have some immediate negative impacts on business. The irony here is that, as staff has stated and many of you have experienced in your travels, large cities have taken advantage of these improvements. Many European cities enjoy these pedestrian-friendly piazzas, and yet, our more pleasant, smaller town has yet to make these adjustments. I hope you will take these considerations to heart and move forward to create this vibrant, comfortable, pedestrian, and business-friendly environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Lemo, so you currently, Downtown Glendale currently services the Maryland stretch between Harvard and Wilson?
Yes, sir.
And, so let's say that this ramps up, and we've got to really bang up design and, and others, that, would you be able to continue, continue to do that?
Absolutely. Couple of things to keep in mind. We're spending money on enhancements to make an area that is not really designed to be pedestrian-friendly a little warmer, a little bit more pedestrian-friendly. Once the street takes on that feel, our expenses can be to putting more ambassadors on the street, hopefully, focusing on more trash pickup because there's been more people there. So not a problem whatsoever. We've reviewed it, we've discussed it, we're anxious for it.
Yeah, you do a pretty, I'm not giving you any credit, but...
I know you wouldn't.
Downtown, your ambassadors and the hard-working staff that you have really keeps Brand very nice, and that's what we would expect. I mean, you saw some of those pictures that we had. There's like spotless, polished, I'm sorry to put in Italian, streets, and I'm sure you Italians do it well, too, but this was Spain.
We invented it.
The Africans know how to do it well, so we would expect that sort of a level of service. I mean, not, not unlike the Americana, I mean, with those sort of design features and things, but this would be our version of it, so we would need it to be like, mm, perfect.
Yes, I think the improvements that have taken place over Brand in the last five years have shown a cleaner place, a more pedestrian-welcoming place, but let's face it, Brand is a boulevard that has to service the city in a multitude of ways. This would have more of a single focus of a pedestrian-friendly place where you, you know, take care of the, not only the businesses in that area, but the citizens and visitors to just chill out and relax. And so keeping that clean is what we do at the district, and I appreciate, I will share your comments with them and tell them how pleased you are with them.
You're doing okay, Joe. I mean, I don't want to give you all the credit, because I know there's a lot...
That's okay. I don't deserve much of the credit, but we do have a phenomenal staff. And a good team. And I get comments all the time about people that are happy for something very, very simple. We should take this in mind on, on Maryland, that they came to the city and somebody looked up from their garbage can just to say hello. That's a big deal. And so we want people to feel welcome here, and I know that we could do a great job for you on, on Maryland. That's our, that's our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Sinayan.
Okay, so this is a momentous day, I think, in, in the city of Glendale. I truly, really, really believe that. When I first got elected in two thousand and thirteen, I think about a week later, the Armenian American Chamber of Commerce invited me to speak to them at a breakfast meeting. And I specifically remember Yasmin Beers and Phil Lanzefan were present. remember Yasmin Beers and Phil Lanzafein were present, as well as our former city manager. Maybe Rubik Galanian was present too. And, as I was sort of giving my report of what my, what my plans are, what my projects are, what I'd like to happen, one of the key ones that I mentioned was that I, in my mind, I see Maryland being shut down for pedestrian, for vehicular traffic, and be turned into a promenade. Actually, of course, the idea was to completely shut it down and not have any traffic on it, but then, you know, I'll talk about that a little later. So, we're that much closer now, about five years later, and I'm very, very happy. If the impact of shutting down that small, sort of the pilot program is any evidence of how liked and popular the idea is, I think it only enforces, reinforces the idea this is gonna be a great project. I believe it's almost like a legacy project. You're gonna have a promenade in Glendale. It's going to give depth to the walking venues that are already there, Americana being the pre-minute one. It's going to give, you know, Downtown Glendale more space where people can spend quality time without having to be in a car. Can't imagine any quality time being in a car, to be honest, but you know what I mean. The two blocks issue, I'm a little surprised the staff says that, oh, you know, we decided that maybe two blocks would make a good, you know, it would be a good idea, because I've always talked about the both blocks. I mean, it just, one block just wouldn't make sense. It's a half-measure. It always, always had to be two blocks. So, I'm glad that we're looking at both blocks, because that's how it makes sense. I want to commend staff, whoever it was, I don't know who came up for the first time with the idea of the alleys, but I personally hadn't considered the alleys until we all walked together, and someone said, you know, the alleys are perfect. I mean, it's, really, you look at it, and if you have the slightest imagination, if you're slightly visual, and I'm talking about myself, I'm very unimaginative when it comes to stuff like that, but even I saw it, I was like, duh, this is perfect. I think, again, we're creating depth to this pedestrian space out of, almost out of nowhere without any real, you know, major expense associated with it. So, I think it's a fantastic idea. I see the potential, everything that Jennifer talked about, you know, you can have art there, you can have, somehow work out where folks, restaurants can have openings to the back alley, and they can set up their tables and chairs in the second half of the day, still making it possible for deliveries to be made during the first half of the day. Also, you know, this is going to be a venue for performing art, too. It is, it's just, because it lends itself to that. Not only that, you know, you mentioned farmer's market. That's a perfect example. I mean, farmer's market has been virtually homeless for the last few years. I mean, migrated from one place to the other. I strongly believe that once this thing is in place, once we've implemented whatever the final vision is, the farmer market, farmer's market is going to be very, very successful there, because then folks aren't just coming for the farmer's market, they're coming because of the Maryland Paseo, they're coming because of the promenade, and they're benefiting from the additional bonus of having a farmer's market there. So, in terms of the versions, the options that are presented to us, I'll go back really quickly to the initial idea that I had of shutting down the streets. Obviously, the parking lots are there, especially the parking lot between Wilson and Broadway does not have any entrances other than the ones on Maryland. That creates a serious problem, which, I guess, anything can be overcome with enough money, but I don't know that there's enough money that we have. So, the versions two and three that take one side of the street, whether it's the western side or the eastern side, and sort of expands it to the end of the center divider, is what I see as the optimal ones, because as opposed to version four, for example, you have, you have more continuous uninterrupted open space, non-vehicular space, as opposed to having two smaller interrupted pedestrian spaces with the traffic lanes cutting through it. I just don't think version four is the optimal use of that precious space that we will end up having. So, personally, I believe option two is the best one, because option two connects to those, both the public alleys and through the public alleys to, I'm sorry, the private alleys and through the private alleys to the public alley. And again, you have more and more uninterrupted walking space, which makes it only better, as opposed to if you have it, if you have the promenade portion of Maryland on the eastern side, then you don't have the connection to the alleys, which I think doesn't make sense, or makes less, less sense. So, those are my ideas. I want to thank Councilmember Najarian, I want to thank my colleagues for also being champions of this. I remember, I think a few months ago, when staff presented, it was a contract extension, if I remember correctly, whereby part of, as part of that, we were presented with sort of the priorities, the city council priorities, and the first one was the freeway cap, and I think I had a strong, sort of a, an exchange with staff and our former city manager, whereas, where I said, you know what, I'm waiting for Maryland, waiting for Maryland, whereas, why are we talking about Cap Park, which is eight, $600, $700 million away, where we can have a real project now, like shovel-ready project soon? And I feel like we're getting there, and it makes me very, very happy. I think the residents of Glendale are gonna be happy, and it's really gonna change Downtown Glendale toward, towards the better. I mean, it is really going to improve on those good qualities that Americana has brought to Glendale, and only make it better, so. That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll go next. Well, when we first did the, started this pilot project, I would go down to Maryland to see if there were people there. Usually, I went in the evenings, and people were sitting out on the sidewalk and on the, the, kind of, on the window ledges, whatever, and just listening and enjoying the entertainment in the evening. And they really were, were happy with what was going on in that area. I think when the Lemley opens and Panda Inn is there, it's going to be even a more exciting area. I think this is, again, an opportunity to energize pedestrian enjoyment. We can attract new businesses. I think once this gets up and is designed, I think we'll be, people will be knocking on our doors to be in that area, and that will be a great occurrence. You know, as far as which design or what kind of design, you know, this, it all depends on how creative we want to be. I mean, we can go, you know, for splashes of color, we can go for subtle, we can go for whatever we, we like. The sky's the limit as far as creativity. I can see the alleys, I have seen that alley behind the parking structure off of Maryland, and I commented, wouldn't this be a great place to put out little chairs and tables and have a little bit of food and relaxation right behind here? There's a Russian restaurant back there that is fantastic, and we could get more activity. And I also can see that, speaking of visionaries, I can see that as being an artist alley, where we have muralists and local artists that, that can go and paint and, you know, can be a really fun place for pedestrians to walk and could attract people from, from all over the area. I had one concern, which I approached Mr. Galanian and staff about, and that was the fact that if we go from Wilson to Harvard, the parking structures are on the opposite sides of the street. So, if you're trying to do a one-way street all the way through, you know, what happens? And, Mr. Galanian, you had already been thinking about that, you have a Plan A and a Plan B in mind, so I was assured that something could be worked out. I do appreciate staff's excitement over this. Christine, beautiful job on the, on the report. I am in favor of, oh, and I am in favor of schemes two and three. I was absolutely, and I don't want to sound dramatic, but I was horrified when Plan Four said to remove all of those trees, because all I could see was public outcry over us removing those trees. So, I'm happy that everyone is in favor of Scheme Two and/or Three. And, so those are my comments. I look forward to this. I think it's going to be fun, and it's going to be a great addition to our city. I'm glad that the business, you know, I had no doubt that you would be excited about this, and I look forward to the project going forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Najarian.
So, yeah, this is, this is very good news. I'm glad we're at this point. I was first alerted to this issue, I think it was the same time Mr. Sinan, and he was a candidate, though, for councils. It was 2000, late 2012, when the owners of that MGN Theater, after having invested millions of dollars in their upgrade, were struggling, beginning to struggle. And one of the things that, that the gentleman had mentioned, at least to me, was why can't we make this a Paseo? And he said, fix that fountain, too. If you remember, we were, we were killing you for years on that fountain. It's unfortunate that he left, but I'm glad that we're at this point. I think we have to really keep in, in mind that it's not just the hardscaping that's gonna make this a success, it's also the mix of businesses that are. I'm not really happy there's a decrepit hotel on the corner. I've expressed that to you, and we understand there are some problems with, with making any changes there. But I think the types of businesses that will go in there, of course, we have a certain control over several storefronts as our property. We need to make them exciting, vibrant businesses. I know there was, what went into the theaters? A gaming company, or something like that? Yeah, an MGM. Sports, sports exchanges?
At this time, it's vacant.
We're, so, this is a great opportunity, then. I think if we can find something, and they had that great bar that they had built out and next door to Jen, I think there's another little space. That's really gonna be the key, I think, to find that right mix of tenants that are gonna bring people in for breakfast, for lunch, for dinner, evenings, rave parties, whatever that picture was in the alley, I don't know, I'm going, don't let police see that, we might have some objections. But, but I think that's important as well. You need a beautiful space, but you need to create that dynamic retail environment as well. And I think, once you get those two elements, it has the potential for a great, a great location in Glendale. So, I do support either Option Two or Option Three. I understand there will be some traffic studies done, so obviously that, which is safest for pedestrians, which is most convenient for drivers, if there is a middle ground, I would support. Let's expand it, so two or three, east side or west side. I'm gonna give some deference to the technical advisors on that, as to which one would work. But it's great, and I think, you know, bang for your buck, this is, this is about as good as it gets. You know, reboot and, or not reboot, it's Arts Center, the sequel, sequel to Maryland, and let's make it really successful.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. I'm very pleased that we are at this point, talking about the design aspect of this project. I think this is a project that it's, it's been near and dear to all our hearts, every council member up here had a huge interest on Maryland Paseo. When I was campaigning, it was part of my platform. But, as far as the design of it, I, I like Option Two and Three as well, but Option Three, which is on the east side, I think it's more feasible to me. I mean, I know we're gonna, we're gonna have to do a traffic study, but if you close the west side and make the west side a pedestrian-friendly environment or the sidewalks, then when you want to make a turn into the parking lot, you have an extended driveway, which is very dangerous. I'm almost there every day. The U-turns are, SUs cannot make that U-turn, and they have to go back and forth a couple of times, they make a three-way turn. And it's, it's very important for us to be very cautious of the safety of that area, because, you know, when it's a one-way street, we have to have some, this is for Rubik, some traffic calming measures, maybe. People just zoom down that street, if it's a one-way street, it's a long street. And also, I had, you know, when I was discussing this, this issues, or any, any issues, some of the issues about Paseo, there was a complaint by YMCA board, and they were complaining that this closing that portion of the Maryland pushed the traffic onto their street, which is Louise, and increased the traffic on their street. So, we need to, when we do a traffic study, we need to look at that as well, see how, how can we ease off the traffic on Louise, so it will help YMCA as well. On the south side, below Broadway, where the, our parking lot is, there are some recessed areas. We talked about this before, as to this is a perfect area for mobile users, maybe, maybe foot trucks, maybe the carts, coffee carts, hot dog carts, they can, they can sit there evening hours and turn that area faster, because tenants are difficult to come in and out, and that the south side of Broadway, there is not many retail stores to really activate it, but those recessed areas, I think it will help. As far as the MGM goes, yeah, I think it's a great opportunity right now, if they know that that side of the street is being turned into a wider sidewalk, it will maybe attract more tenants to come in and occupy those spaces. And there are so many retail stores on that side as well, on the, on the east side of the Maryland. And that's all I have. I'm not against Option Two, but I think Option Three is more, it's safer than Option Two, to be honest with you. So, the, the traffic study and rest of the studies will indicate which one is better. But I'm glad this has come to this point, and we're moving forward.
Can I add something, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, I, you know, I really wanted to talk about the palm trees very shortly. It's interesting, when you talk about this project, I mean, you know, I always tell people, oh, this is how it's gonna be, that's the vision, and you'd be shocked at how often people say, what's gonna happen to the palm trees? Clearly, a defining characteristic of Maryland. So, whatever we end up doing, those trees are gonna be there, because they're too pretty to touch, and they're very important. And finally, just, just a quick note on the umbrellas. No, my idea for the umbrella cover, for example, as an example, right? Or the, the sales that Mr. Najarian had was for the alleys. I think the alley, the, the public alley really lends itself to something exciting like that, and it's, you know, it's close enough where you're not dealing with two billion umbrellas up in there or sales. So, having said that, you know, I want to ask staff, I'll make a motion, but I want to ask staff, are you looking for, you're looking for one recommendation, right? You want, you want council to give you one direction, or you're looking for, I mean, you want us to say Option Four, or Option Three, or Two, or you want something in between, or what's, what's the deal?
I think the options of Scheme Two or Three is all we need, and what we will do-
And then you'll do the traffic, okay.
That's right. And what we'll do is we'll, we'll work with the, with the consultant to examine those two possibilities, and then I actually think it works out better to have the two scenarios, so that we could run through the different traffic engineering-
So, that's the motion that I'll make.
And before you make that motion, thank you, Mr. Sinan. I want to, I want to compliment the staff and our consultant for bringing up the idea of the alleys as well, to combine everything together, so you will have a little hub, you know, this is the art district, it's not just Maryland Street, and it's not just Brand, it's everything in between as well. And I want to, I want to compliment you guys, you guys did a great job. So, I think the alleys will be very happening as well. Pasadena has it, we're not reinventing the wheel, Pasadena has it, and it's very,
Pasadena has it, we're not reinventing the wheel, Pasadena has it, and it's very, very-
Ours is gonna be better.
Always better. All right, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and, uh, just to, uh, clarify, Christina Gardi is actually, she works for the city in our urban design team, um, so I'm sure she, she has, uh, many such projects that she's, uh, working on as well, but yes, uh, it's been-
Our personal consultant.
Our personal consultant, that's right. Uh, but this has been truly a team effort, uh, even with the pilot program as well. Um, it's really from our public works department to fire and police, Chris Peplo, he's worked on, um, redoing the landscaping as well, so it has truly been a team effort, um, in this, and of course, thank you to city council.
Very good.
I'd be remiss, actually, not to thank our former city manager, Scott Ochoa. He really had a vision for that alleyway, boy. He really did.
Oh, did he? Was he the one with the alleys?
He really, he really did. I have, I have to give him props for that, even though he's not here.
We thank everyone.
He gets no props. He gets no props.
Okay, we do have a, a, a motion. Is there a second?
No second.
All right, roll call, please. Yes. One A and B, so. One, one A and B.
Just the, the picking two and three and then B. Yes, yes, that's, that's my motion, A and B.
And your motion is for, uh, option second.
Option two and three pending, pending traffic report.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian, Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garbati.
Yes. Thank you for that. Uh, do we have a need for a closed session?
We have to adjourn.
You have to adjourn? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.